Good evening, I'd like to call the City of West Sacramento, December 2nd, 2010, Planning Commission meeting to order. Per tradition, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to call on Commissioner Moore to lead us in the pledge.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just to introduce folks to what's going on this evening, and run through what we'll be doing, there's one item on the agenda. Prior to getting there, there's presentations made by the public, or there's an opportunity for presentations by the public that are not on the agenda. So, I'll be looking for forms like these, these are over there, and please hand them to the clerk if you wish to speak on items not on the agenda, or items on the agenda, and I will be calling those in the order that they are received. First, on the agenda is actual presentations by public on matters not on the agenda, this time I have no slips. So, moving on to correspondence and staff communications from the city planner.
Thank you Vice Chair Leibig, members of the commission, good evening. Last night, the city council took up a number of election-related items, including the swearing-in of newly-elected members. There were also council appointments to various committees and boards, and they also received applications for commissions and boards, such as the Planning Commission for Review. So, they are currently looking at all those applications. So, we may have an appointment in the near future to fill the vacancy left by now council member La Desma. They also approved the conceptual design of the Bridge District Water Tank and Park Project, and so that is now moving forward into more construction detailed drawings. And that is staff's communication for this evening.
Thank you, Charlene. Disclosures of ex parte communications, at this time, planning commissioners should disclose any communications that they may have had on the agenda? Okay. There is no agenda order to approve, given that there's only one item. Actually, before we go to the next, to the consent agenda however, Charlene, I thought we were going to get a corrected version of the minutes this evening?
Yes, that should be under the consent item number one.
Okay, am I missing it? Did everyone else get it?
We did not get a corrected copy of the minutes.
No corrected copy, no.
Okay.
I believe Cindy's gathering some.
If we need to, we can always just make the correction now. And for simplicity, so we don't have to review the whole thing, I believe, the only change was the attendance stating that I was absent, and Commissioner Galvan was here, and possibly on who voted on something.
On the minutes.
On the minutes, okay.
Because I think Joe and I both abstained on the minutes last time, because we'd missed the meeting before.
Okay, so is it?
It's been updated and corrected now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve amended minutes?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, and once again, I'm just going to run through how we're going to take this. We're moving to public hearing on Ordinance 10-2, which is the ordinance regulating the dispensing of medical marijuana. For fairness of those wishing to speak, we will be using the three-minute clock, you'll see it up there. Please limit your presentations or comments to three minutes. We will first hear presentation by staff. Following the staff presentation, I'll bring it back to the commission for any questions, then I'll open up the public hearing. Following the public hearing, I will again ask the commission if there are any questions of the public, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. So, that's kind of how we're going to do it. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Charlene, thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Leibig. I did neglect to mention one piece of correspondence that you have, and that is related to this item. It is from Mr. David Schmidt, who emailed some correspondence in for the Planning Commission. So, you have that before you, okay? Tonight, what we're bringing back to you is a couple of alternatives related to medical marijuana land use within the city. This last was before you, back in December of 2009. At that time, we were looking at an ordinance to regulate the land use, location, distances from other land uses, some operating procedures, et cetera. And that was brought forward to the city council in January and February for their consideration. At that time, in that ordinance, there were the requirements regarding land use, as well as certain operating requirements, such as the requirement for identification cards, and also a limitation on the residency. It was limited, at the time when you saw it, to City of West Sacramento residents, and then further expanded at council to Yolo County residents. At council, we received several concerns from advocates about the ordinance and some of its legalities. There were threats of litigation at that time, and given all of that, and some of the other cities also taking a look at the ordinances, and looking at moratoriums as well, and then some of the court cases that were coming forward and opinions, the city council decided to extend the moratorium that was in place for another year. And that moratorium is coming up, the expiration is February 21st, 2010, or 2011. So, since that time, there has been a ballot measure to legalize marijuana, which failed in November. The City of Sacramento passed an ordinance to allow medical marijuana dispensaries within their city. And based on staff's research, it appears there's about 39 currently. They do have operating restrictions and limitations on where they can locate, and there is also significant fees for the application to operate such a dispensary. And so, at this point, that seems to be serving the regional need, which was an expressed concern at the time, over a year ago, when we were taking this up. There has been recently a home invasion, armed robbery in Southport, where medical marijuana and money was targeted, and so that has heightened staff's concern of public safety associated with the land use. So, what is before you tonight are two alternatives. Based on some of the things I just spoke about, this staff has also brought forth an alternative to prohibit the land use within the city, and that is what staff is recommending based on this. Just to note that that can be revisited by the council in the future, should, you know, a year or two from now, should you choose to recommend that, and they choose to adopt that, that they could come back and revisit that, and possibly change to allow the use. The other alternative that we're bringing forth is the February 2010 ordinance with two revisions, and those two revisions are the removal of the identification card requirement, and the removal for the county of Yolo residency requirement, and that is based on city attorney So, that concludes staff's presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission, before I open up the public hearing?
I have one for Charlene. Charlene, in attachment two, which would be the proposal to allow medical marijuana dispensaries with certain conditions, there's reference to C2 zoning, and then some discussion about the possibility of a couple other zones that would possibly be suitable, and there's no dialogue really about those areas, except kind of a general description of where they might be. Could you maybe elaborate a little bit on the basis of that consideration, that the M1 and the, I think it's MCI, zones be considered along with the C2 zone, if that option was to be pursued?
That was brought in based on comments received at Planning Commission over a year ago, and it was also discussed at city council. There was a concern about limiting it to just the C2 zone, concerns about what locations would be available in the C2 zone, as well as costs of rents, adjacent uses, et cetera. So, there was the introduction of possibly looking at the mixed commercial industrial zone, which MCI is actually the general plan land use designation, the zone in the zoning ordinance is actually ML, and then also the M1 zone, which is the light industrial zone. Those two zones, staff is supportive if you choose to go that route, to recommend those, those would be feasible from a zoning perspective. Those areas, briefly, roughly, are the mixed commercial industrial is on the south side of West Capitol Avenue, at the west end, near the bypass, and then there is also a little bit of that zoning up in the Riverside Center industrial area, off of Reed Avenue. The M1 zone, the light industrial zone, is also in and around those areas, but also has, there are also a couple other areas along industrial avenue, and also in the Southport Business Park area.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. I'll call off the names again in the order they're received, and I'll also call off the name of the person who's on deck, just to give you a heads-up. First name I have is Sherri Barr, following Sherri, I have Max Del Rio.
I looked at the different zone areas that you do have. I come from Woodland, I've owned my own business as a patient care center for five years now. I see what the city says, that the areas that you have in the industrial area, and closer, is that Harbor that's over that way?
I'm not sure which way you're pointing.
When she was talking about over by Reed, I guess that's in the, is that what you guys consider the northern part? Is that?
That would be west of Reed, yeah, on Long West Capitol, as well as Reed Avenue.
Right.
Harbor.
I've looked at that area, I do think that that is a good place to start, instead of downtown. A lot of things that I think city members and people of that nature do not really know how this business works. I know that you guys look at it from the legal end, but I also look at it besides the legal end, what's going to be safe for the patients, what's going to be safe for law enforcement, residents, that's what I also look at. I don't know if any of the other businesses do. There's a few in Sacramento, that the areas that they have picked to open up operations, as me, I don't feel that, looking at it from a legal aspect and a patient safety, I don't feel that some of those clubs should be in the same location that they're at. Sacramento did adopt that the 39 can stay where they are located. I think West Sacramento has the opportunity to look at a bigger picture. I do believe in the ID card program. In my business, I do have an ID card, it is accepted in Woodland, West Sac, people look at it in Sacramento. So, that might be another avenue that you guys might want to look into, and I do feel that the law enforcement, the police department, like it does state in here, I do feel that they need to have some kind of input, because doing this type of a business, these people are here to protect and serve, and I feel that they need to have a relationship with whoever, I would assume there's only two spots, and there has to be an open communication with the city, with the law enforcement. So, looking at the different areas, I believe that to get it away from downtown, you don't want the congestion, you're wanting to get all the traffic away from where regular individuals conduct business. So, being out in the, is it the MCI, is that the area? And the light industrial, I think that's a good spot for you guys to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Max Del Rio, and followed by Dan Senna, and please state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Max Del Real, President and CEO of California Capital Solutions. I am a registered lobbyist for the State of California. I work specifically with the medical cannabis industry throughout California, and I'm excited to be here tonight, addressing the commission. I worked closely with the City of Sacramento on their leading ordinance, which is being recognized throughout the state as a statewide model. The reason being is Sacramento focused on the facts, led by Michelle Hepner, Special Projects Director. They recognize medical cannabis as a legal entity in California, it has been that way for 14 years, and they address the issue as a zoning issue, which you have before you tonight. I come directly from Chico, who last night, the City of Chico, a very progressive community, much like your own here in West Sacramento, followed the advice that is being proposed tonight. Numerical limit of two zoning issues that address the issue of public safety, and more importantly, selection process. I brought tonight a document that I would like to share with you and the commission, it comes from the City of Eureka, it is a request for qualifications. I traveled the state on this particular issue. Tonight, I'm going to encourage all of you to stand on the backs of success of other municipalities. You do not have to reinvent the wheel, I would encourage you tonight to do something, not just for the citizens of West Sacramento, but for the entire citizens of Yolo County. Many of your citizens have to cross the bridge and go access their medicine in the City of Sacramento. You have the opportunity tonight to trust your leadership, to trust your council, and give them an opportunity to follow state law, and to access and address the needs of qualified patients in your community. I submit to you tonight, a request for qualifications from the City of Eureka, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you'd like, you can hand them to the clerk.
Thank you.
Next, Dan Senna, will be followed by Nathan Sands, and again, please state your name for the record.
Hi, thank you, I'm Dan Senna, and I represent Calcan Center, and we're a nonprofit collective, and I'm a local West Sac person, and I've been in business here for about 12 years. I had a bathroom product over on Del Monte, next door to Jazz Jubilee there for quite a few years. I've been very active in the medical marijuana business, I was also the first one that applied for an application here, a year and a half ago, and you'll see that on record, the only thing that was holding it up is that I didn't have a location. I have had a location secured with Jim McLaughlin, McLaughlin Properties, in the industrial area, the M1 area, for over a year, so I am prepared to move forward with that, provided you folks, you know, give us the approval. So, that's about all I would like to say, is that I was the first one to apply in the area, so I'd like to be one of the first ones to be selected and approved, in the best way I can say it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Sands, followed by Lynette Davies.
Good evening, my name is Nathan Sands, I'm a West Sacramento resident, homeowner, and I'm also an advocate for medical marijuana patients. And just to be clear, I'm saying patients, I advocate for what patients need, not necessarily what the dispensaries want, and that is why I'm here. A few things I'd like to go over, basically to bring us up to what's the speed, we've been going through this whole process to create an ordinance, to hone an ordinance, to get legal input, to get community input, we've come back time after time after time, and so it seems a little strange now to suddenly say, now that we have an ordinance everybody pretty much agrees on, let's go for a ban. And what wasn't mentioned tonight is that $40,000 of taxpayer money has been spent, and that was the number, I believe, back in February, looking into this issue, creating this ordinance, and so let's get some ROI, some return on investment on this, let's get some businesses here, let's help lease spaces, let's provide jobs in the community, and most of all, let's have control over these dispensaries. The dispensaries are legal anyway, dispensing medical marijuana is legal, what we want is control over these businesses. So, a few things I want to go over is that we've been accused of not compromising on this issue enough, and I want to emphasize that we're not professionals at this, maybe we're a little naive, or I'm not, we came in telling you the truth, the law, what's going to work for patients, and after all this time, your attorney agrees with us, so that's good to hear. And the reason we haven't compromised is because we can't change the law, the law is what it is, and we've told you the truth right from the beginning. And I think with these changes that are recommended by your attorney, this is a doable ordinance, it will not invite any litigation, it does address every major issue we've had problems with, might not be perfect, but we can come back and fix things too, as the city council has reminded us so many times. And I want to add a new piece of information that you might not be aware of, that during the conversations in Sacramento, the city council meeting, they invited their police chief to come up and comment on whether dispensaries increase crime, or have more calls for service, and their police chief looked into it, did studies, got information from us about where they're located, and how long they've been there, and said, no, they do not increase crime, they don't have any more calls for service than any other business, but he did say that they wanted them to be closed by about 7:00 or 8:00 PM, I'm not sure the exact time, because they get so many calls for service after that, drunk driving, alcohol-related, spousal abuse, bar fights related to alcohol, and basically that is what they spend most of their evenings doing, cleaning up alcohol, which is available everywhere. And again, I'd like to say that we can come to an understanding here, this is a very good ordinance, I support it as a resident and as a patient advocate, and I encourage you to do the right thing, both legally and as far as compassion is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynette Davies. Again, please just state your name.
Hello, my name is Lynette Davies, I'm with Crusaders for Patients' Rights, I'm an Americans for Safe Access affiliate, and I wanted to congratulate you on the work that the staff has done on this, it's come a long way within this last year, they've done a lot of hard work, and we definitely approve of this ordinance, and we'll give it our full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, does anybody on the commission have any questions or comments? Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing, and bring it back to commission for deliberation. Anybody want to be the first?
I don't mind.
Okay, Mr. Moore, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I have a couple of questions that I, you know, it's kind of interesting, they're asking, you know, we're talking about whether we are going to accept the ordinance or not. If we accept the ordinance, the criteria that we would be looking at are only two items, and I think it was Mr. Del Rio handed us, or what looked like a volume of things that might go into the criteria for choosing someone to own a shop. Is our criteria really as simple as two items, or are the two items maybe something similar to what Eureka would have?
I haven't seen what's been provided by Mr. Del Rio, from the City of Eureka. This is where we left off with our ordinance last time, there was three criteria.
Right.
And with the removal of the identification card requirement, we had to remove that as one of the criteria as well. So, you know, in order to add in additional criteria from somewhere else, that would require additional work.
Absolutely.
By staff, it'd probably have to come back to you.
But of course, I have no idea, like you, what Eureka might have done. I mean, he's telling us he does this all the time, and that's the best system he saw, I mean, it's at least worth looking at. I guess the other part of it that I don't understand, and how we would do this before accepting this ordinance, is on the section talking about cost recovery. I mean, knowing full well that we're going to have to have someone go out and check to make sure that we are regulating these facilities correctly, or the facilities are doing what they're supposed to be doing, I mean, how do we, how are we going to get paid for this? I mean, have we figured out a system yet? I mean, it talks like we're going to come back and look at it later, if we adopt the ordinance.
Staff has looked at possible scenarios, but we have not been directed to bring those forward, that would be something that the city council would direct us, because they're the body that approves new fees.
And since we brought Mona here, this would be kind of a legal question, and we received a letter tonight, from, I don't remember the gentleman's name, but the letter we received, and it kind of talked a little bit about if we were ever to charge a fee to open one of these facilities, or have a tax on them, that that was illegal to do, is that, I mean, it sounds like what Mr. Del Rio said, they do have a tax and a charge to set up one of these.
In the event that the Planning Commission recommends the adoption of Ordinance 10-2B to the city council, and the city council does in fact adopt Ordinance 10-2-B, the issue of cost recovery would then come in the form of a resolution. of cost recovery would then come in the form of a resolution, and the city would then be able to recover costs associated with any direct impacts from medical marijuana dispensaries and the operation thereof. However, before we would be able to assess those impacts, we would also need to quantify them and determine what type of cost and burden it would be on, for example, police services. So, in other words, the city does have the authority to recover costs that are a direct impact of any business.
I guess, you know, I gotta have a dual question that I think I'll ask, and what is the fact that, you know, these facilities are legal in the state of California? Illegal federally to have marijuana? The voters of California turned down the idea of having marijuana available. Why would we want to operate a separate store? Why wouldn't we go to some pharmaceutical-type store, a drugstore, with a registered pharmacist to do this?
There are a couple of ways of addressing that question. First of all, the city of Anaheim recently litigated this issue in the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals held that the Compassionate Use Act and the Medical Marijuana Program Act do not and are not preempted by federal law. Now, the reason why our state law is not preempted by federal law is because we are not legalizing marijuana. We are simply not criminally prosecuting patients who have a legitimate need and access marijuana pursuant to the Medical Marijuana Program Act and Compassionate Use Act. The reason why marijuana cannot be dispensed at, for example, a pharmacy at this time is because the sale of marijuana is still illegal and can be considered a crime. The only way that it is legal in the state of California is through dispensing in a collective or through and through a patient-primary caregiver relationship. There's a distinction-
But the facility charges for marijuana?
There's a distinction between selling marijuana and being able to recover the reasonable costs of cultivation and processing in a collective scenario. Does that answer your question?
It probably does. I'm just too naive to understand it all. But that's fine. You know, but it just seems strange that if it's for a medical purpose that you can't go to Rayleigh's and get your marijuana. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me. That's okay. Thank you.
Okay. And just to add, a pharmacy is required to dispense any kind of medicine pursuant to the FDA, which is federal, and which also probably explains why they would not be dispensing marijuana, which at this time is only allowed pursuant to our state law.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Actually, I just have one question. Maybe you can explain to me the difference between the city's registry and the statewide registry. What is the difference between the cards? Does the statewide registry exist right now?
It's actually a county registry in terms of identification cards.
Yes.
Each county is authorized to issue identification cards in compliance with the Medical Marijuana Program Act. The ordinance that was presented to this planning commission last year originally required an identification card that was issued by the county. It would not have been a separate citywide issued identification card.
And there's case law now that brings that legality into question?
There's actually no case law or statute that directly discusses the concept of identification cards, whether they are or are not allowed.
Okay.
I have a question or two. Jennifer?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Getting back to what Mr. Moore was asking about from a legal standpoint, you were clear to stipulate that you can't sell marijuana, but you can dispense it, and in order, and you implied, I think, that this is not to be a business-for-profit. These are nonprofits that are going to be involved.
That is correct. It must be a not-for-profit collective.
What mechanism would be used to make sure that the price that the patient, or the money that a patient gave the dispenser was appropriate for the product that they were getting?
While we would not be able to ever determine with certainty, one of the requirements in draft ordinance 10-2-B does allow the city to access the financial records of a dispensary to be able to make that correlation, to determine whether the cost of cultivating and processing the marijuana and the cost that it's being incurred on the patient are, in fact, the same.
I see. Okay. And I kind of want to get back to the dispensing as far as the zones are concerned. I want to make sure that as far as Charlene is concerned, from staff's perspective, any of those three zones would be appropriate for a location as far as staff is concerned?
Yes, we did look at those. In the industrial zones, there is some retail use that is allowed. There is a limitation on the percentage of the floor area that can be used for retail. In industrial, when we talk about retail, we're talking really about having a public counter where people would come in and purchase things.
Now, originally, when we saw this, it seems to me like there were some concerns voiced regarding the proximity of these potential dispensaries to locations where children might be, not necessarily schools, but places like the Bounce Spot or Dance Studios or those types of places. And I don't see them included in the proposal B.
They were in the original one, so those shouldn't have been struck. There's still a distance requirement from youth land uses. So, in the case of that example of the Bounce Spot, that being in an industrial zone, it would be something we would look at, and they would have to, even though within the zone, would still have to be the distance from it, which I believe was...
I think the only thing that's stipulated here, Charlene, is 1,000 feet from a school and 250 feet from residential zoning.
Those limitations have been obtained directly from the statutes in the Medical Marijuana Program Act.
But that would be something that they could, they could put a distance requirement in from land uses that have use that frequent.
That is correct. I believe that last year, between the planning commission and council direction, we originally had those uses listed in, and there was direction to remove some of those uses and include schools, for example.
Okay. And I want to also comment regarding the qualifications. I'm not satisfied that the proposal attachment to, it seemed to be pretty subjective and not really too objective. For example, we just talked a minute ago about verifying that the price of the product is equal to the cost of providing the product. However, there's no criteria for any kind of business experience or education regarding accounting and that sort of thing. It just seems to be more, what have you done in the community type stuff? What kind of volunteering have you done is worth half of the weight, and the other half having to do with being in the medical business of some sort, yet not necessarily demonstrating. And I would be also curious to see what was submitted to us as an example of the criteria, because I think the vetting process to determine who those folks would be that are going to be dispensing marijuana is probably the most critical thing. The quality of the dispensary is going to be very important to the success of any kind of program. And I'd like to say right now that I don't think we have enough information, even though this is a land use issue. If we were to go forward with 2B, I think there are some things that would need to be clarified to make me happy with it, and absent those, I would go with the recommendation to not allow it at this time until we could get something that would be, I guess, in my mind, a little more reasonable, because there are issues. You mentioned Charlene, that there was a recent home invasion robbery. That happened about 1,000 feet from where I live. Have lived for 32 years without any crime in that area at all. And what was alleged was that three people with masks and guns robbed a person of their marijuana and money that supposedly was derived from the sale of marijuana. I'm not sure of the details, and I'm not going to get too deep in that, but I've talked to several city folks, and it's scary to think that that kind of thing can happen in just a regular residential neighborhood. I would rather see things firmed up more than if we're going to pursue allowing this in our city, and at this time, I don't really think that we're there yet. I know there's been a lot of work done, and this, according to the testimony that we've heard tonight, we're getting better or closer to something that would be reasonable for everybody considered, but I think the selection process, determining exactly where the locations would be, I'm concerned about de facto conditional permits on what would traditionally be legal uses. For example, the children activity, I don't think our ordinance, if we have an ordinance, should allow dispensaries near where children would be. And if they can't be by a school, you certainly wouldn't want them to be by where children would be going after school, whether the batting cages or the Bounce Spot or gymnastics or fencing lessons or any place where children would congregate. And if we do that, then, let's say we have a vacancy and we allow a dispensary, and then a landlord has a place for rent that traditionally would be acceptable for a place like batting cages, with the conflict between the dispensary and that potential use, somebody's going to lose, and it would probably be the landlord that wouldn't be able to lease his space out for that child activity. So, I would like to see that cleared up some, and I would really be disappointed if we don't have a requirement from a distance from where children would be. So, that's what I have to say. But I think we're progressing on this thing. It's in better shape than it was before, and I can't say that I would absolutely be thrilled at any point, but I think it's a matter of time where we would, you know, want to make sure that those folks that have a need for this are suitably taken care of.
Go ahead.
I just had one question. I was reading the requirements for the applicant, but are there any requirements or rules about who they employ to dispense?
There are. If you look at Section 5.28- point, excuse me, Point 040B, the pre-selection of applications, for example, the applicant himself must not have any felony convictions and must provide security personnel, and we also require certain components that the security personnel must meet. But one of the most important things of regulating medical marijuana dispensaries is that there must be a patient-primary caregiver relationship. So, any person that actually dispenses marijuana to a patient must be able to establish a patient-primary caregiver relationship. You can't simply employ someone and have that employee, without that patient-primary caregiver relationship, dispense marijuana.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for everybody's comments. Just to sum up here, we're making recommendations to council tonight, and we're considering two ordinances. I keep forgetting the numbers. 10-2A and 10-2B. 10-2A is prohibition. 10-2B is an ordinance which we've seen, we discussed in detail a few months back, but has had some changes to it. I agree with Mr. Morozini that I think it's a matter of time before we will see dispensaries in this town, and I also heard from the commission, general compassion of patients and discussion of medical use. So, we are discussing a need to have that taken care of. I appreciate all of the work that the citizens and members of the community have put in, as well as staff, to coming up with the two different alternatives. We don't usually see two different alternatives in one meeting, but I definitely appreciate this. As far as zones go, under the definition, I know youth spots has changed, but schools is under definitions, and under schools, it's item J. It includes any child or daycare facility. And I don't know how you define that, but I would include Bounce Spot under that, because actually, it's a daycare and it's a child facility, two separate things. So, even though they may have eliminated a child thing, I forgot what terminology you used.
I think it was youth activity.
Youth spot or youth activity. I think it still may be covered in the current definition. Ms. Hamilton, the selection criteria, just a question, is it typical for us to have selection criteria in an ordinance? Is this the only ordinance that will have a selection criteria for business?
Selection criteria, yes.
Yes.
Operating criteria, no.
So, we do have other selection criterias in other ordinances?
Well, for land uses, the selection typically is done by certain findings that need to be made. There might be certain requirements in zones, things of that nature. So, these particular criteria, we do not have these in any other ordinance.
Correct. I wasn't asking about these specific criteria. Just are there selection criteria in other ordinances for other uses?
If I may answer, generally speaking, in any kind of a land use ordinance or regulation, there aren't selection criteria, given the unique nature of this type of use. The planning commission and council directed staff to include some type of indicators that might promote the best possible applicants, given the limitation of two dispensaries in the city.
Is it possible to include language that it would allow modification of the criteria over time at staff's recommendation? In other words, instead of setting it in stone right now, for example, we're still learning, and there's still information coming up.
Normally, an ordinance can only be amended through another ordinance. However, we can include the requirement that this kind of selection process, the, for example, community development director or the city manager may vet and modify or approve certain selection criteria that's compatible with general direction from the council or the planning commission. Again, that would need to be identified in advance in this ordinance, or it could also be done via resolution.
That is exactly what I'm asking, is whether or not we can include language that would allow flexibility for staff to make changes in the future without having to bring it back to the planning commission.
We can probably do that. As long- We can probably do that, as long as we set certain parameters so that there's not unfettered discretion.
Okay. I do want to move this forward this evening. And I know it is awful for me to request text the night of the meeting. However, if the group is leaning towards 10-2A, it might be pointless for me to work on this. However, I still... The other flip side of this is we need to discuss both of them, in my opinion, thoroughly. Because we are making a recommendation to council on one of them. However, council can come back to the other if they so choose, because we did discuss it tonight. So is that correct?
Should the Planning Commission recommend approval of ordinance 10-2-A, which is the banning of medical marijuana dispensaries at this time, staff would still bring forward a new ordinance in the future that does regulate medical marijuana dispensaries to the Planning Commission? So this commission would in fact be able to review another ordinance in the future if that's the direction that is given to staff. In other words, even with the approval of ordinance 10-2-A, the Planning Commission is not precluded from seeing new versions of an ordinance that would regulate dispensaries in the future.
If Planning Commission does not adopt staff's recommendation for some given reason and does recommend 10-2B to council, council can still go and adopt 10-2A at the next meeting.
That is correct. Yes.
Thank you. So I guess my point is, regardless of what we recommend tonight, we need to thoroughly vet both.
That is correct. I would caution the commission, however, that the selection criteria do not fall squarely within the parameters of land use and planning activities. Therefore, it's probably within the purview of the city council exclusively to decide what those criteria would be, or whether the city manager or the community development director, for example, could amend or establish new criteria.
Can I make a comment regarding that? Because I think I'm understanding what you're saying. But from a land use perspective, a better vetting process for determining with a conditional use application a suitable dispenser of medical marijuana is... That ties the land use to the conditional use permit. And remember, when we started this, this was going to be a lottery, like an ABC permit for alcohol. And it's gone to the point where now we have some criteria that we're going to evaluate. And it looks like statewide, there are cities that have prototype qualification criteria that we haven't looked at yet. And I guess to answer our co-chairs' question about trying to move this thing forward, I don't see that we could move this forward with any specific criteria for the vetting process. And I'm still... The land use issue, again, is what we're talking about. And I still have a problem with having a dispensary next door to a gym. And I would not move to adopt the B plan simply for that reason, if for no other reason. I think this commission, we forwarded that as a criteria. And what we're going to end up doing is having issues with compatibility, where, let's say, a gymnasium or a Bounce Spot, for example, is a permitted use. And yet, we would have no control over that occupant, yet we know by virtue of the public's concerns that we wouldn't want to put them side by side. And so I'm not comfortable with that. And I can't, again, tonight, move this thing forward for the option two with the absence of the conflict with youth activities in a marijuana dispensary. I just can't do that. And I think we have a great opportunity now to look at what other people are doing. We don't have to invent the wheel here. And we've taken a lot of time. And as has been mentioned several times, there are a lot of people who have had a lot of input. We have the public out here that have commented, and they like the direction that this is moving. But we're going to have to live with this. And sure, we can go back and fine tune it, but I don't think these are fine tune issues. I think these are fundamental components of the program that need to be ironed out first. And we can talk about the other options, but I think that Plan A basically is if we're not satisfied with Plan B, that we have the moratorium, continue that until such time as... Until or unless the time comes when we would find that it might be a suitable use in our various zones. So again, that's what I have to say about it. And I don't think I'm going to change my mind about that youth activity component.
Okay. Well, I'll call the vote in a minute. Just one point. I actually know three gyms in the town. I'm not sure if there are any more. They are near residents, residents, and a school. So just where those are, I don't see it being next to that. If there's things that I think the commission wants to change on the actual ordinance, we have the opportunity to do it now. This has been going on for now over a year, I believe. If we want prohibition, we should be voting prohibition. If we think it's not ready yet, I think we should advise staff on what exactly has to be done.
And that would be my recommendation. If I was to make a motion right now, it would be to go with Plan A, to prohibit it with the note to the council that staff had forward. If we could agree that there are certain things that need to be worked out. For example, the criteria for determining and selecting the proprietors. And the other issue that I have is with the absence of distance requirements from youth-type uses in the land. Those are the two things that I'm hung up on. And I think by virtue of that information that was provided, there'd be ample opportunity for staff to take a look at what some of that specific criteria would be. The economic thing, the experience in the field, and education regarding not only the dispensing of marijuana, but taxes and accounting and principles and that sort of thing.
If there are no questions for staff, I think I'll call for a motion. The first motion I'll call for is on staff's recommendation for 10-2A, which is prohibition. If insufficient votes are counted to pass 10-2A, I will call for a recommendation to move 10-2B. Is that an appropriate plan? Actually, legal, because we don't usually deal with two at the same time.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion for 10-2A, which is the prohibition. I'll make a motion to adopt 10-2A, staff's recommendation of prohibition at this time.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? No. And the measure passes four to one. Thank you.
Can I repeat what I... For the third time? Can we forward this along with some concerns? We didn't talk... I didn't get any feedback regarding my concerns.
You didn't let anybody else talk, but that's okay. But those same concerns that Ron's talking about, it's like, I heard the comment about maybe we could take it over into the the zone on Riverside by the Highway Patrol. But don't forget, we just put a school in there. And now, all of a sudden, how big is that ban going to go? And are you even able to put a dispensary in that area? And then we talk about we're going to go into other areas, and here's the areas we talk about. But that's one of the areas that we know it can't go into, because there's a school there. So I think before we talk about putting it in other areas, I have to see exactly what we're talking about. So we have to have one of those cute little maps that I can see, that I can feel, I can touch and go, yeah, I do understand, and I don't have a question. But that same question Ron talked about, about if you have a facility, I think you don't want one of these facilities next to a little dance factory that's out there with a bunch of little kids dancing. I don't think that's appropriate. I think it's not an appropriate place for a facility to be dispensing marijuana. I think there are areas in town where you're not going to be next to a bunch of children. But then comes the dilemma. If you put it into an M1-type zone, like the bounce factory is, where is the president's taken? I mean, if we allow a medical marijuana facility there and someone comes in to you saying, I want to put a dance studio two doors down from that, do we now tell the dance studio, no, you can't go there?
Correct.
When it's a permitted use in that facility? And, you know, those are the types of things I didn't get into and didn't get into the discussion on, because I don't know how that works.
Well, we wouldn't be able to prohibit a dance studio if it was a permitted use in the zone. But in the industrial zones, they typically are not. They typically require a use permit. So if the youth-oriented land use requires a permit...
Yeah, and I'm not trying to be particular, but I mean, just like over by the police department, we put a gymnasium, where there's a little gymnastic studio that wasn't permitted in the area. But it seems to be a great neighbor, and the people in the town love it. But we have to be aware of how all that works. I mean, that's one of the problems I had with the land uses. The same issue I didn't understand about how we're going to get paid for all the work we're doing, and the people were going to have to send in and monitor that. I didn't understand that part of the ordinance. I didn't think it was severe enough in the limitations, like what we're talking about around schools and stuff. I mean, I'm not sure even 1,000 feet is sufficient. But, you know, maybe it needs to be a little further from everything. But I don't know, maybe 1,000 feet's reasonable when you look at it. So, you know, I mean, I kind of talked on the other issues, and some are similar to what Ron's saying. But the more you think about it, it's not necessarily this ordinance is bad, but there may be something a lot better out there. And the stuff from Eureka, I think if they have a real criteria that I think they said was, you know, a great thing for the state, I certainly would want to look at it before I voted on something new. So I just don't think we're quite ready for this yet. I know I'm not. And I think that now you have the idea of what we're all thinking up here.
But we don't want to just send the council a message, no. I think there's some room here.
And we can elaborate that.
I think, okay, I would like to...
We had our vote. I'm not confused at all, Russ, about that. But we've, on numerous occasions, we have made an action, and we've forwarded information to the council.
That is correct.
And that's what I want to do. And I'm not hearing that. That's what I'd like for us to do.
Yeah, any discussion right now should be recommendations to council, I believe, attached to the vote.
Vice Chair Leibig, if I'm hearing this commission correctly, there was a 4-1 motion recommending approval of ordinance 10-2A to the council. And if this commission wishes, they could also recommend that staff forward these additional recommendations, including the zoning classifications, including the distances between medical marijuana dispensaries and youth-oriented facilities, selection criteria, and cost recovery.
That's it.
I think those were the main components that I heard.
Yeah, but I mean, I think our motion is very distinct. I mean, at this point, we don't think we want a marijuana facility in the city. And if we're going to... If they're going to decide to do something different than that at this point, then I think these other things need to severely be looked at, and it needs maybe to come back to here or whatever. But at this point, in what's going on throughout the state, I just don't think we're ready. So, I mean, I think my vote was very clear. I voted no. So, and I think that's what we're all saying.
I think we have our recommendation.
I would add to that to continue to explore some sort of acceptable ID card. I'm not quite sure where... I have a hard time getting past that issue myself. And so if there are acceptable ID cards out there, I thought I heard somebody say earlier that they're using them in Woodland. See if there's some common ground there. I think it's an important issue.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the meeting, except for informal discussion.
Well, I'd like to advise the audience that this now will be moved forward to the city council. And it is tentatively scheduled for December 15, which is a Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM. And it will be publicly noticed after tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move for adjournment.
I should do adjourn.